County was funded in part from some awesome state legislation. Oh, there's Casey. I wanted to make sure that they knew that I'm flattering them. And I do really, really appreciate it, primarily because of my previous role, which some of you may have known. And so this is a great tool for rural counties. And Cache County being a third-class county, and for the benefit of the public, counties are classified by population first through the sixth class. And Cache County is the biggest fish of that third-through-sixth-class designation. Counties that are third-class or higher are considered rural. So as part of this SB 95 bill that was passed two regular sessions ago, there's a reporting mechanism both for fiscal year '21 and the grant session for fiscal year '22 that's before us and the action item tonight. But to take a step back, I give a little bit of a history there with the bullet points. You have this context from the past, and I'll defer to Madam Chair as well as Councilman Paul Borup, and certainly Executive David Zook, who I understand was on the Chamber Board of Directors and may have actually been the Chamber President that year, that the Chamber had identified, because they had been the contracted party that was responding to RFI's, requests for information that will typically come in from a government agency, usually under code names because most of those entities may be publicly traded and for reasons of not disclosing their true identity to their competitors or to land speculators, these typically come forward, ask for certain information from interested communities as to whether or not they'd like to secure said employer inside the community. And the Chamber had that role, as we talked about in the last agenda item, and took the advocacy position, Executive Zook, again, correct me if you feel like I glossed this over too much, that the county should have a more coordinated approach. The county, generally speaking, agreed. The two parties teamed up and created CEVIDA, or the Cache Valley Economic Development Alliance, and under that partnership initiated a SWOT, or strengths, weaknesses, opportunities, and threats analysis, which led to a developed strategic plan undertaken by Louis Young Robertson in Burningham, a third-party consultant. And so, serendipitous as it sounds, this analysis was done just as SB 95 was developed and brought forward by the state legislature, specifically State Senator Scott Sandel and Representative Carl Albrecht, two great advocates of rural Utah. And the county applied under that program, as did several others, many others, that are in rural designation, and was awarded the funding. Caveat being that last year, there was a cut to it. It's the third bullet point there, that due to COVID, Part B was nixed altogether and Part A was pretty much halved. Slightly less than half was made available when it was all said and done. So the county decided to create the Economic Development Department, for which I'm standing here before you. And the original legislation enacts or authorizes funding at the state level for two years. And we have an action item this evening under consideration for the second year of that. The first year, the county utilized the $98,000 and some change, and then subsidized the rest for the creation of this department, as you likely know because you, as the budget officers, put that forward. So as you can see there, you took the max, you added to it from the general fund, created the department. And here, you see too, that in order to qualify counties from the third-through-sixth class, must put together what's called the County Economic Development Advisory Board, or CED, County Economic Development Advisory Board. And you did that as well. That's one of the attachments that I gave you, coded in the blue tab. Lets you know what your resolution was and reminds you of the members and the positions for which they fill certain spots as designated by state statute. Right along the lines of that, so this year, we do not have the same kind of cash crunch that the state originally envisioned when they cut back their funding. And so now, the full spirit of the legislation is in force. Should we decide as Cache County to move forward, being a county of the third class, and by classification, there's a certain matching funds that are needed to apply for Part A. So real quickly, and again succinctly, maybe glossing over it a bit, Part A and Part B are two different elements of funding that could be, depending upon your action, in part tonight and at a future point when the state opens up Part B. Part A is envisioned to have the greatest amount of flexibility for counties that are rural, third-through-sixth class. It's up to $200,000, but as originally envisioned, although it was waived last year when they cut that funding part in half, you have a 40% match. And that can come from a number of different, oh, I've got it right there, can come from a number of different sources in combination. You can have a redevelopment agency or a community reinvestment agency, private sector, well, you know, not one to read off bullet points, you can see there on the screen where those funding sources can come from. But the generally accepted one for most counties participating in this program is general fund. You'd have a 40% match if you wanted to take up to the $200,000 in Part A's vision for funding, depending upon some of the recommendations that I'll go over here next. The second part is Part B, and it's a competitive fund that would go up to $100,000, but again, is competitive with other counties in the pool that make an application. The Economic Development Advisory Board has the following that you see there on the right-hand side of the screen, the following recommendations in priority. The first would be, like last year, the departmental budget. Full disclosure, that's about $140,000 per annum, most of that in salaries, wages, and some minor equipment elements, and some travel training professional development. That's pretty much the bulk of that. The second is a concept of workforce development and retention. As some of you know, because I've had the opportunity with Mr. Borup and Mrs. Worthing being on the Economic Development Advisory Board, the nature of our current environment for employers is really, really rough. Normally, folks like myself would love to boast about a 1.7% unemployment. By the way, the lowest in the nation out of 3,069 counties, boroughs, and parishes, we have the distinction of being the lowest. State of Utah is the second at 2.6, only behind Nebraska narrowly. But we have the lowest county unemployment. That's really rough if you're an employer right now. It's great if you're an employee, you know, kind of shopping yourself around. You can pretty much go to anywhere you might want to work and be able to negotiate something very advantageous. I know you know this because you've discussed this phenomenon with your own wages and, you know, considerations as it applies to your budget. So it, the recommendation from the, excuse me, the Economic Development Advisory Board is how to work with bringing two different bookends of the working-aged environment to participate at least as much as like, say, a part-time job. And then in the middle, the Lieutenant Governor's Identified Returnship Program, a good play on words for internships. I'm happy to go into more details on any of these, but just for the sake of trying to keep within the time constraints requested, I'll just provide a couple of oversight and then feel free to ask any questions. Third priority is the Innovation Center or Workers Hub. This would be in partnership with the Bridgerland Technical College. The idea that there are some folks that, for whatever reason, may have been the most vulnerable and subject to layoffs last year with the closure of certain businesses that were considered nonessential. Some of those folks, even though their jobs may now be available again, have realized that what that means economically for them and their household is that they're vulnerable and may have chosen to choose a side hustle. And what could we do to bring those folks in from treating it as, for the most part, and they're homegrown? You know, these kind of innovators, for whatever, to grow here as opposed to expanding elsewhere and choosing to relocate, how could we possibly incent the next round or generation of those kind of businesses? And then five is, you may have heard of What's Up Down South? It is a multi-day event that St. George hosts. It's very successful at bringing some of the brightest minds in business together to provide coaching and mentorship for businesses in southern Utah, as well as networking among those businesses where they can help feed off of each other by business clusters. What could we do to expand what we had this last June in a similar fashion up here? And then number six is an element of deeper dive, if you will, from the Louis Young Robertson and Burningham SWOT analysis, specifically a quadrant kind of study that envisions what a community is good at versus what they're not, what they like or want to be versus what they aren't. And of course, where there's overlap in one of those quadrants, where communities identify what they're good at and want, is where you should, you know, low-hanging fruit pursue some certain interests. And we could employ the talents of a local consultant that's through the USU with a number of communities in the county through its unincorporated area or as a region in totality to take a further deep dive to find out where that low-hanging fruit for us is and where we would like to go. So again, moving kind of quickly, that's the overview of the Economic Development Advisory Board's recommendations, prioritized one through seven. And so now we move to the last slide I've got here in this presentation, and it's more about strategy. So the action item before you this evening is strategically, or excuse me, specifically about Part A. Part A is the deadline that is advertised, first of all. Part B has not been yet disclosed. It's expected by late October. It might be open for those that would like to apply for that, up to $800,000, again with the caveat that it's competitive. And Part E, Part A, excuse me, A, is our consideration of what, among those seven priorities, might you like to place as projects under which we could apply for this state grant? Knowing that to do so requires a 40% match of one or more elements in that mix that's enabled by state statute. Madam Chair, I hoped that I moved through that succinctly, but realize that the council may have some additional questions.
Yes, so Sean is writing a grant or asking if he should write this grant, wants to know what it is that we prioritize in there. How are we going to pay for this grant, the 40% match? Can that come from, does it have to come from the project itself or toward the project? Or can it be anything economic development-like, that we have an economic development director?
Excellent. So if I could turn your attention to the orange-tabbed piece of paper, it's front and back, you'll see that there are some parameters for Part A and Part B. If for tonight's consideration, you'll draw your attention to Part A specifically, notwithstanding at some future point, consider Part B, or even strategically as to, if you agree on these seven priorities according to the advisory board's recommendation, which ones might you want to put in B versus A? Because A, at the maximum, if a 40% match is cash, Madam Chair, then you must come up with $80,000 to leverage it against the allotment of $200,000 from the state. Which among those prioritized recommendations or projects might you think you can achieve for $280,000, if you agree with them as a priority of yours in the first place, knowing that roughly half that amount would be a mirroring of the departmental budget as it's been in fiscal year '21? Where the money's come from, Madam Chair, would more than likely probably be general fund. It's the one element that you can guarantee. However, because of the uniqueness of these times, you do have a gift from the feds in terms of ARPA funding. ARPA funding, as Cameron would be able to attest, has some caveats on where you can spend it. And one of those is for economic opportunity. Treasury has provided some guidelines as to how you can achieve economic opportunity. And coincidentally enough, pretty much all of these, for the same purposes of SB 95, could also qualify as ARPA under Treasury guidelines. So you could leverage ARPA funds to be a federal matching grant, and I have double-checked that with staff at GOED or GOEO or Go Utah. They're still kind of trying to iron what they're going to call themselves. So it could be general fund, it could be federal matching grant money through ARPA or something else, if you felt like there was a more strategic funding purpose. Cameron? Did he take off?
Thank you, ma'am.
I think that's a great question, Madam Chair.
Thanks.
Sean, I think if we're not sure of all of the possibilities, maybe we could do a little more research on that, because if, for example, you mentioned the Chamber of Commerce funding earlier, I wonder if something like that or some of the other expenditures remaining in your department could be used toward that match? If so, that would lessen the load on our, the rest of our budget. But ARPA, I think, is also a potential good source.
So the guidance I'm hoping for this evening, for your consideration and action, would be, do you more or less agree with the seven prioritized items? If you were to elect to jockey them around, attributing a rough dollar amount per item, and letting me know how I might submit our grant application through GOED for the Part A funding? And again, happy to flesh out any more of those, one through seven, if you have questions. Again, I realize I moved through them kind of quickly.
Did you say on number three, you would partner with, like, Bridgerland and Howells in there, or use?
Yeah, thank you.
Joint facilities? How do you see that happening in workforce development and retention? Is that with workforce services? I mean, how does this all tie in?
Excellent question. So I'll address three first. Actually, both two and three, and part of the reason why they ranked high in the prioritization, you may be aware that there were, the state had a local matching assistance grant or something worded similarly for ARPA funds. So the state is getting a huge allotment of ARPA funds as well as counties and cities directly. And the state, I think smartly, state legislature, again, to the rescue, they, out of their huge largesse, said, "We will put $50 million to the side, and we will use this as a leveraging tool for local communities who know their regions best," to say, "If you'll put up some of your ARPA funding, and you're willing to, you know, dedicate some of it to that, we will have a program whereby we could leverage our ARPA funding," because they'd both have to meet the same Treasury guidelines, and you can make application. I have some good news and I have some bad news. The good news is there were a lot of fantastic submittals. Cache County submitted four, I submitted two on behalf of economic development. The bad news is there were a boatload of them, there were over 500, and the aggregate amount of the requests for the state's participation was about $1.2 billion with a B versus the $50 million that were available. And the total projects were over $4 billion, which means that, in the aggregate, the applicants were requesting about 25% of the funding necessary for $4 billion worth of investment at statewide levels. They were asking for about 25% of that to come from the state. The terrible news is that 95% of the aggregated dollar requests are going to be told no because there's only $50 million in the kitty, right? So what I'm narrating here is to tell you that number two and number three were actually part of our submission. They will continue to winnow this, you know, aggregate list down through November, so we won't have an answer until sometime presumably in November to know whether or not those two applications could be viable through that application process. The good news is those applications are already pretty much boilerplate now for this, which is why they ranked so high as number two and number three for SB 95. If only because there are so many quantity, about 500, and sheer aggregated dollar amount over a billion, we're thinking statistically our chances of getting that funding are probably pretty low, right? So we proposed them here through this format. Again, the caveat may be that you'd end up using it the same way with leveraging matching grants. The Innovation Center and Workers Hub, as part of our application, I worked with Mark Alexander BTech. They have about $30,000 in cash set aside to work towards this goal, but this has been a smaller version of his vision that would, and forgive me, I'm not sure how much of this narrative they have expressed because it would involve a real estate transaction, how much they may have expressed publicly. So if you'll forgive me, I'll be a little bit vague on this, but they are considering a real estate acquisition that would enable them to go from two office spaces that they use as an innovation center in his concept now, to more of that. His original concept with a mere $30,000 by today's construction dollars is that he would just simply build out some more office-styled spacing of about six or so that would enable some of those, you know, home-based businesses to kind of move out and learn what, you know, overhead is really like, to pay rent on Main Street, you know, styled properties and the like. Depending on what this envisions, and what we had proposed was a request of about $150,000 under that other grant scenario, which we could, again, emulate here, but if you did that combined with Part A's number-one departmental budget of $140,000, you'd exceed by $10,000 the total aggregate we could request of Part A of $280,000, okay? Workforce development and retention was about a $50,000 ask, and that too, like number three, is in conjunction with Bridgerland Tech and the Chamber of Commerce, providing mostly mentorship and marketing and advertising to try to educate certain demographics that we really, really need them badly, kind of like a Rosie Riveter or Uncle Sam campaign during World War II. We need you. We need you for the safety and vibrancy of our community. We need you to participate in the workforce, right? It could even involve an outdoor advertising campaign or radio campaign that envisions, say, in Brigham City, a billboard if you're commuting southward into Ogden. If you live and worked in Logan right now, you'd already be at work. Conversely, as you're coming home northbound on I-15, a similarly themed message that said, you know, if you lived and worked in Logan, you'd be home by now. Because if you're happy in your place of employment, you may not be looking and may not be aware of what some of our awesome employers could benefit, right? And then you'd get some of that quality of life hours and days back. So both two and three, Councilman Gunnel is envisioning a partnership with the Chamber in Bridgerland.
Thank you.
Well, to keep it moving along, it'd be easy to cross some stuff off the list, so I'm all in favor of crossing number six off. That way, we can just start working some other things.
Is that a motion?
That is a motion.
Sir, second.
Second.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded to remove item number six, community analysis, from this list for the Part A grant. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
All is unanimous to me. Was there any against or any abstain? Okay, so I'll take that off. I'll just tell you that I think number two, the workforce development and retention, is really critical right now because we can't grow business if we don't have any employees to work in our businesses. Whether it's bringing in a new business or growing our local businesses, we've got to be able to have workers, so.
I will agree, that's a pretty big challenge to my position these days. Normally, 30 to 50% of a job like this would involve outward recruitment, you know, bringing folks in. That, I think you would appreciate as pretty much suicide for you and me these days if we were to do that, right? Because you've got a number of successful businesses here that literally in the aggregate are hiring thousands of people right now. Case in point, just one month ago, there were 1,550 job openings with Department of Workforce Services just across the parking lot here, and there were 160 people on unemployment benefits. 160 versus, you know, over 1,500 job openings. If you looked under, indeed, the website and you searched through the, of Cache County, there were over 2,000 that were attributed to Cache County zip codes of employment openings, and again, only 160 individuals. Now, you know, that's just a snapshot, but nonetheless, it paints a pretty bleak picture if you're an employer. So right now, these days, we're not doing a whole lot of outward recruitment to new brands. We're just trying to help existing brands, you know.
So Sean, so do you need us to approve the rest of it? And then also, what's your timeline? Are you, if we approve this tonight, are you going to move forward writing the grant?
Yes, ma'am.
On this?
Yes, ma'am.
So you won't come back again to the, you've got to turn it in before our next council meeting?
That would be correct. I have no problem, you know, submitting via email for your reference, you know, what the completed application fields look like. It's an online portal. It's not a paper copy that goes in or gets faxed. Good news is, it's 2021, so you just, you know, submit it online. But yes.
We need up to amount, like, are you asking for the full $200,000 with a 40% match? Or is it whatever the council will agree to?
It is, if I were to break it down, I would say this. If you have priorities that you agree with, now knowing that there's one that's stricken from the list, right? I just narrated to you two examples. If we did the departmental budget or number one, that would be just $140,000 of 280 capacity, just $140,000, right? So you'd have half of that left, and if we went with what our local-state matching grant was for ARPA funds, at $150 for number three, we'd already exceed the $280, you know, maximum. For the purposes of this grant application, I would ask you that, do you think attributing, you know, 280, however you might choose to split the baby, among these priorities, do you feel that these priorities deserve attention that requires you to create 40% match or $80,000 contribution somehow, some way? To further perhaps assist your question, departmental budget, $140,000. Number two, just working in descending order of prioritization, $50,000. Number three, 150, or you could just reduce it by the amount that's left as a remainder, from 140 plus 50, you're at 190, you got $70,000 you could attribute to that and work with Bridgerland Tech to engage some sort of expanded Innovation Center project? Or some derivative thereof that, you know, goes up to your tolerance level of $80,000 in contribution?
Thank you, Sean.
You're welcome.
Counsel, entertain a motion.
Well, we ought to do something, but I'm not sure where to even start.
Well, do we want to come up with $80,000 match in order to get $200,000 from the state? Or would we prefer to do less than that?
No, I don't know enough about it. I mean, we've heard all this dialogue and background and things like that, but I guess I'm not completely sure about what grants would even be used for in our county. I mean.
So the grant?
Yeah. Can that money be used to bring in more workers? I mean, that's what we need are more workers, not more economic development outside of...
And that's sort of priority number two, right?
And that's number two, behind funding our economic development director's budget?
I'm in favor of providing the $80,000, especially if we can tie it with the ARPA funds.
Use the ARPA funds?
Yes.
Do you want to make that a motion?
I would. I'd make that a motion, from the ARPA funds, provide the $80,000.
Okay.
I think that's a good investment of that money.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded to apply for this grant with the matching budget amount of $80,000 using ARPA funds. Is that correctly stated, Dave? Okay, is there any further discussion? Seeing then, we'll proceed to vote. All in favor of the motion?
Aye.
Aye. Is there any opposed, any abstention? Passaged unanimously. Okay, you've got a mandate now.
Thank you very much. I appreciate it, and I'll work with Executive Zook and Cameron to proceed.
And on this part that you also gave us with the blue, that we need to amend the resolution at some point to change the wording of the board, we'll get this on our agenda for next time because we didn't notice it, so.
I actually think that this is a copy from what you passed earlier this year.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, the red lines are actually what you...
Okay, this is the old one, and it just, okay.
Yeah, I'm sorry for any confusion that caused.
That's okay. No worries. Just trying to be clear.
Thank you, counsel.
Thank you. Okay. All right, we now move to item number 10C, which is consideration of the Bay River Health Department test to stay, order of constraint. Department test to stay order of constraint. Just to give a little bit of background on this item, Council, on September sixteenth, notice was given by the Bay River Health Department, fulfilling State Code twenty-six A one one fourteen seven, that twenty-four hours notice was given to our executive. The executive was, under state law, has seventy-two hours to terminate that order of constraint, which did not happen. That didn't happen, so it moved forward and it started, came in effect September twentieth, it goes through October twentieth, and it implements test to stay basically for elementary schools, different than what we have at the state law. This is, if there's three positive tests in a class in seven days, then it is required that students have to test to stay. There's nothing in there about masks. I guess there's been some confusion of that in the public, but there's not. According to that same state law, the county governing body may at any time terminate this order of constraint. We have our Health Department Director Jordan Mathis with us today. Thank you for being here, so we can ask him any questions. Jordan, did you have anything that you wanted to present to Council? And thank you for being here, by the way.
Yeah, no problem. I really don't have anything specific. I sent out, when I sent it to the Council, I sent it with what we felt was reasonable justification for it, and the reasons for it, specifically being the wide range of elementary schools. When you, when you say that you have to have thirty cases, and we have some small charter schools, which requires a lot of spread to be detected in that school before any mitigation measure is taken. And state law does require that a local health department put in place measures to control the spread of infectious disease. Our viewpoint at the Health Department is that vaccine is that measure for the majority of the population. This isn't a vaccine ineligible population, and therefore, we tried to put together something that was a reasonable measure. This same protocol has been applied to things such as head lice in the same, in the same setting. So screening, once it's identified, and removal for treatment. So that's, that's really about it, unless there's questions that you have for me.
Thanks, Jordan. Are there any questions, Council?
I'll ask one. Why, what was the basis for picking the number three?
The basis was, we felt like, we constrained that window, so state law is a fourteen A window, and we thought, well, let, if we have three cases in seven days, it's an elevated level of risk. Typically, you'd be somewhere around ten percent of that population, and so we figured that was an elevated risk for that population. The other thing that we were trying to do is trying to get ahead of a test to stay for an entire school. We felt like we could play a little bit further upstream and rather than wait. We also, we also looked a little bit at what we had seen, and we had seen up to five cases in a classroom. That got the Logan City School District a little bit concerned, and at five cases in the classroom, they saw less than fifty percent because of concern. People started staying home. And so the question is, could you test and give those people a little more assurance that, you know, their kid doesn't have the disease, they're okay, and the rest of the class is safe, and not have them voluntarily stay home for ten days? Because that classroom saw fifty percent of that class go home, when maybe it wasn't warranted if we had just tested, screened, and found out what the actual risk was in that population. So that was kind of the reason for three, maybe, I'm not saying that it's perfect. And, and to correct you, Madam Chair, it does say May. We will work with the LEA on this to determine if, if we have kids that test positive on a Sunday, there's reason to believe that they weren't infectious in a classroom, and therefore, there's not a need to count them towards that threshold. So we will look at it, and that's why we put May in there, so we have the discretion to work with LEA and say, what is the actual risk with this three cases? So.
Thank you for that correction. That's important.
That brings up another question for me. What's the, what is it that you've seen, the asymptomatic spread versus symptomatic spread? What are the parameters around that?
You know, we, we aren't tracking, we aren't doing as much contact tracing as we were before, so being able to identify the asymptomatic spread has been hard. We are seeing growth in, in our elementary population as compared to last year, and I don't know that I'm surprised by that because we have such high vaccination rates in our, in our older population, which makes, makes the virus naturally go to other populations that they might be able to infect. We didn't, I wasn't, we didn't screen for symptoms at Mountain Crest High School, but we had forty-three positive, forty-two positives out of that test to stay requirement. You'd, you'd think that the majority of those were asymptomatic because they were at school, they weren't sick enough to be at home. So whether or not they were sniffling or things like that, we didn't screen for that. We were just getting people through, so we didn't screen for any symptoms during that event.
Have you looked at any of the published research on asymptomatic versus symptomatic spread?
No.
What are you seeing, what are you seeing in these youth? It's been, to my understanding, that the youth that get exposed, those who end up coming down with it, are we seeing any really serious thing other than they get a sniffle and a cough?
You know what? The, the risk to this population admittedly is extremely low, so.
With that, that our youth, why are we going to so much effort when the youth, even though they get it, don't get it serious like the adults? I mean, I've got people that live in my neighborhood that are in the hospital, but they're my age.
Yeah.
And I don't know, I guess I am not educated enough on this. Have we got any young kids at Logan Region Hospital right now?
I don't, I didn't, they didn't give me, I met with them today, and they didn't give me the age breakdown. They are full, which is concerning, but we've had, to your point, I can pull the data and, and send it to the Council, but we've had very few zero to eighteen hospitalizations. Back before the Delta wave, I think we were at thirty-three total hospitalizations under the age of eighteen in our area. So to your point, I mean, it is low risk. The question that, that we have to ask in public health is, what level do they contribute to broader community spread that leads to infections in other populations? And without really detailed contact tracing in place, we can't quantify that, so.
Just, just a comment about the test to stay event at Mountain Crest. I have two granddaughters who are at that school, and they, they told us that it was actually, to them, a very pleasant experience, and that the whole school was just cooperative, on board, and the kids were happy to do it, and those that, a couple of their friends tested positive, and they said, well, we'll just stay home. And their teachers helped them so that they could get their homework and they could get their classwork for the few days that they had to be home. But, but I like, I like the head lice analogy, you know, and if students come to school with head lice, they are asked to go home so that it doesn't spread. And it's, it seems to me to be a very non-intrusive way to help minimize the spread.
Yeah, and Mountain Crest did an amazing job. I spent about an hour down there that day. I mean, they did make it pleasant. They had music playing through the, through the gym where the testing took place. Kids were very cooperative and just ran right through the whole thing, and we were done before eleven-thirty. So it was, it was a really, the school did an amazing job.
Which one of the tests are you using?
It's the Abbott BioNex Now, so it's an antigen test. It's, it's not a PCR test, it's a nasal swab, not the nasal pharyngeal swab that goes way deep, but it is a nasal swab. And it's really, as far as specificity, it's really good. As far as the sensitivity, which is looking at generating a false negative, it's not as great. But it typically, so it may miss some positives, but you can, you can have a lot more faith in the positives that you do have. It's not going to generate as many false negatives or false positives.
How would, how would such young kids react to such a probe?
I have a daughter that's tanned, and she's been tested twice with this, and she seems to act.
That same nasal swab?
Yeah, just the nasal swab, not the nasal pharyngeal swab. Admittedly, all, so the, the protocol we put in place for Mountain Crest was particularly those that, that may have special needs were excluded. The, the school knew who those students were, talked to them, and they were brought in separately. Those that, that opted still to test, even though they could be excluded, they were brought in separately so that there wasn't a lot of stress on them with, with everyone around and things like that, so. Yeah.
And so if a, if a mother and father says, well, I, I really don't think I need my child tested, then they, they're out of school?
So the, the order does say that they have to produce a negative test, but I think we would look at the exclusion for those that, that have special needs, that may not, it may be a traumatic, the, the benefits out, aren't there towards the net negatives, so.
I have a question. It says here that an LEA in the department may not test a student for COVID-19 who is younger than eighteen years old without the consent of the student's parent or legal guardian. How are you getting that permission, and how long does it take?
So that was the same, that's the same thing in state statute. We pulled that straight from state statute, and that's what we ran on at Mountain Crest. It was, it was sent out the day before. The majority of parents were able to offer that via electronic signature where they consented, and then administrators were there getting verbal consent from parents for those that didn't get it. So it, it went pretty quick, and I would imagine for a classroom of thirty, it's not going to be as hard as trying to get the about thirteen hundred that we got for Mountain Crest.
Does the incidence of spread in a school diverge from the incidence of the spread in the community? Other words, do you see higher, lower transmission rates in a school compared to the wider community?
I would say they track pretty, pretty similar. So as we've been watching it through, through this county, we, we saw the spread in the north part, which led to Skyview, and had Skyview's enrollment been just a little bit lower, they would have hit the threshold. Mountain Crest's issue was, they were under the fifteen hundred, so they just had to hit the thirty cases in that fourteen day window. But we saw the same thing happen. We saw kind of a surge in the north part of the valley, and then we saw Hiram and Nibley kind of light up as well, and we saw the same, similar trend. We definitely are still seeing more spread in our secondary schools than our elementary.
I looked at the numbers over the summer and compared them to see if there was much of an increase or change, and it's pretty much the same for under eighteen. It's about, I believe, fifteen percent for under eighteen is fifteen percent of the total positive tests. So to me, when I look at that, I wondered, does the school change anything? I don't know, maybe it doesn't. But I had a couple other numbers, if you don't mind me sharing, that I, that I found to answer to Gordy's question. So this number came from an email from the State Health Department that was given to one of our state representatives who sent it to me. And what's really hard about trying to look at numbers is that the ages are not always the same, so you might have age one to fourteen, but somewhere else it's eighteen and under, and so it's kind of confusing. But this is for the state for ages six to eleven, so that is our elementary school age. This is from the beginning of COVID, March twenty-twenty to September twenty-second of this year when the email was sent. That age group statewide has a total of a hundred and four hospitalizations, which is point three percent of the positive tests for that age group. And that is only point four percent of the total hospitalizations statewide. So as you said, it's a very, very low number there. And in Cache County, I was able to look up on, I think it's called IBIS, and through yesterday, age one to fourteen, so it's a little bit different, but for Cache County, we've had fifteen hospitalizations throughout that whole time for ages one to fourteen, which for Cache County is one point eight percent of the total hospitalizations of all ages. So it is very low risk for these, these younger kids. You know, and, and in saying that, first, I want to just thank Jordan. Jordan's been wonderful to work with, and we really appreciate it. So in, in my comments, I don't want it to sound that I'm being critical, I'm just presenting some information that I have, and we've really appreciated you and the thoughtfulness, too, of wanting to take care of these kids. But I have to question whether this is too much, and let me, let me explain why. We don't, I guess for that age group in Cache County, we don't have any deaths. Statewide, the leading cause of twenty-nineteen for, for death ages ten to seventeen is suicide, and that really does concern me. And for, and one of the things I found is for ages zero to fourteen, so that younger set, it's the fourth leading cause of death, but it's behind stuff like congenital anomalies, low birth weight, and I forgot what the other one is, but it's stuff like that. In this Utah State Health Department, two thousand nineteen prevention needs assessment, sixty-two point two percent of Utah students in grade six, eight, ten, and twelve, so that includes sixth grade, which is often in elementary, sixty-two point two percent in twenty-nineteen experienced moderate depressive symptoms. Okay, so this is before the pandemic even, even hit. In twenty-nineteen, the youth risks survey for high school students, so this is the older kids, and this is really sad, thirty-six point seven percent said they felt sad or hopeless, twenty-two percent seriously considered attempting suicide. That's one in four of our kids. I'm sorry, I get emotional, but I, I had an email from a mom who said her elementary school student last year had considered, seriously considered taking his own life because of the COVID restrictions and how difficult emotionally it was for, for him. So I can't imagine that, given those statistics, and it's so hard to find numbers on this, but I can't see that they've improved with the stress of COVID, all of the stress, not just the lockdowns and the mask wearing and the testing, and, you know, all of it's been hard. But I've wondered how our kids have fared, because if you look at what happened in Denver, in May of twenty-twenty-one, the Denver Children's Hospital declared a state of emergency for youth mental health due to the pandemic. And in the article talking about it, they said, kids have dealt with chronic stress for the last year that has interrupted their development, and another doctor said, our kids have run millions, their tanks are empty. Where are our kids on that scale? It's so hard to gauge. We don't know, we don't really measure it. But I'm wondering if this order, which I know is absolutely well-intentioned, and I'm not at all trying to find fault that way, but I wonder if maybe it would be better if we tested just those that had symptoms. Because really, if they're sick, they need to stay home, and that could lessen the, the issue with kids feeling stressed out about, oh, my gosh, I'm going to have to, to test, and it kind of scares them. They're little, these are our littlest kids, and I think it's, it is really stressful for them, and there might be some that it's not a big deal, but I think for a lot of them, it is, it is a big deal, and it is stressful. And I wonder if also in doing that, we could take into account if they've already had COVID, they could say, look, we've already had it, and also if we could work to improve the airflow in schools, because that's supposed to be helpful to. because that's supposed to be helpful to get, you know, to get the virus out. But as I look at, as I look at these numbers that I've, that I've mentioned about the percentage that are hospitalized, it's just, it is so low that it is really hard for me to justify testing these really little kids like this. So I just, I just wanted to, to put that out there. And I don't know how the rest of the council feels, but that, those are my concerns.
Jenny, do we have the dashboard up, by the way? Can we put that up? Because the, the question I have, right, is this health order is to, the reason we're doing it is to slow the spread of COVID-19. So if we've said that, and if you hit, there's a, there's a schools thing as well. And you can, you can look and it'll show the community if you go down as well. We'll look for some, just some graphs there. So there we go. You can go back up to a little bit higher, just a little bit to those three right there. So all those curves are on a downward trend?
Yeah.
Statewide, we're on a downward trend. Cache County, we're on a downward trend.
Yep.
So you put this in for thirty days to slow the spread, it's already there without any mitigations?
Admittedly, this was drafted when we were going up, right?
Right.
We had the conversations and so.
So is there a need for it anymore?
That's a good point. And, and that's, I think the wisdom in the, the legislature and drafting the way they did is that does give the council the prerogative to, to make that determination. I'm not an elected official. There has to be a, a reason, or an avenue for redress. So.
And that's, and that's why we want to work with you is to say, hey, when we have these things, what are we looking at? What are the needs? Part of the stress is there's no, there's no off-ramp for a lot of this stuff. You get stuck into things and, and it just progressively builds and builds. And instead of, instead of taking a, a look at the data and saying, hey, what is happening? Number one, in the community. And then to Gina's point, number two, I think, you know, the messaging on this has been problematic in a lot of ways. And there's, there's a lot of nuance in this. And there's a lot of things that, that are true that we often don't talk about, or the press definitely doesn't do. Natural immunity is superior to vaccinated immunity. That's, that's a fact. End of story. Now then, that doesn't mean that anybody's an anti-vaxxer, or if you're at risk, you shouldn't go get vaccinated and you shouldn't talk to your healthcare professional about it at all. But if you've got kids that have had COVID, do we really need to test those kids, number one? If you've got kids where you've got a low incidence of spread and no symptoms, should we be testing them when the curve's going back down to increase that anxiety that the kids feel? Could we make these more targeted? And could we deploy them when we're in, you know, the, the uptake rather than, than the downfall?
So one of the exemptions is natural immunity. I mean, we are not, not going to test individuals that tested positive previously. We don't have vaccinated immunity in this population because they're not eligible. But we did throw in, if you've been in the exemption section, it does allow for exclusion for natural immunity. That means they had an actual positive test. So that, that's already in there.
Isn't that for a hundred and eighty days?
A hundred and eighty days.
Yeah, okay.
So.
It's not like from the beginning, it's just back.
Yeah.
I, for the life of me, don't understand what the big deal is. Why has COVID become such a divisive issue? I mean, like you said, head lice. Student came to school with head lice. Would he be quarantined and asked to stay home so that it doesn't spread to other kids? Of course he would. If a student came to, to school and had mumps, would he be asked to stay home and be quarantined? Of course he would. If a kid came to school and had smallpox, would he be asked to stay home? Yes. So why is it we are having such a hard time with this COVID thing? I mean, it's a disease. It spreads. It has killed people. We're trying to slow the spread. And by simply having a simple test, and if we as parents and adults aren't getting emotionally charged over it and passing that on to our kids, then it's not going to be such an emotionally charged issue for them either. We're not asking them to wear masks. We're not asking them to, mandating vaccinations or masks or anything like that, that, that would make their lives more difficult, that would make it uncomfortable for them. And there's a lot of opt-out opportunities given. I guess I just don't see the big deal. I mean, if I'm, if I'm going to be.
Well, Carl, the measles and mumps analogy they used, of course, the individual stayed home, but that didn't cause all the rest of the kids in the school to have to be tested. There's a whole difference to the whole proper thing.
Yeah. But, but nevertheless, if it was, if it had reached the point of a mass kind of infection, then, then we would. And I, I'm old enough to know and remember, when I was in grade school and got the measles, they shut down the school because there were a lot of kids getting the measles. And it wasn't a big deal. We just knew that, hey, I, I got sick and I don't want somebody else to get sick. And so I'll just, we'll just stay home.
And I think every kid in your age group got the measles eventually. And that's the thing that I've always said about, you know, this COVID, this can go on for the next twenty years if every time we have a COVID person, we shut the world down.
Oh, but this, but this isn't shutting the world down.
Well, we did shut the world down.
We did, but I'm talking about this.
And we're looking towards doing a similar thing.
What we're talking about here with the test to stay thing doesn't shut the world down.
Well.
I think John.
I've got one thing to read to answer Carl's question, but let's go with David first.
Well, John had something and then go to David.
I'd like to take a few minutes at the podium with some of the code sections.
Okay, can you, yes, and that's a good point. Okay, thanks, John. David?
Yeah, I reached out to several administrators that I, I've known and worked with, you know, over the years and, and that are currently administrators in the Cache County School District. And I asked them, I says, what do you think about this test to stay program? And, and I said, I will not name names, but I said, what do you think? And every one of them said, it's a waste of money. He said, it's a waste of money. Says, we already have things in place that if we start, you know, these symptoms, we start seeing these, that we get two or three cases in a class, then we can go to that class and we can actually work with that class and get things taken care of and try to mitigate it that way. And I know Ridge Line, I believe they shut the whole school down for about ten days last year, I believe, was it?
I don't remember. I wasn't here at that time. Sorry.
I remember they shut that down for about ten days. And, and in that process, then when they all came back, boy, they, it was like three ago. Yeah, they went to mask, all that stuff. But anyway, they, they had a, they were able to squirrel chip, but that was within the school district had that ability to do that. And they says, we can control this and, and do a lot of these things quite cheaply without being invasive in everybody's personal lives. And that's how they, they felt about that. And so I, you know, I reached out to them and so forth, but I got one other thing, but I'll bring it up a little later. So let's go ahead and.
Well, Paul had something.
Well, and, and I'll always keep going back to this because I always like to look back right before everybody lost their mind in twenty twenty and say, what did we know? And who were we listening to? And who were the world experts? So you've heard me quote them before. I'm going to quote them again, but expand a little bit. So DA Henderson, who was the dean of the School of Health at Johns Hopkins, led the team that eradicated smallpox. So if anybody knows about infectious disease and how to respond to it, I'd say DA Henderson was pretty good. And there's two, two things I'm going to read. One was on quarantine. As experience shows, there is no basis for recommending quarantine, either of groups or individuals. And this is for pandemic influenza, so a similar virus spread. The problem in implementing such measures are formidable and secondary effects of absenteeism and community disruption, as well as possible adverse consequences, such as loss of public trust in government and stigmatization of quarantined people and groups are likely to be considerable. Called it right on the head. We start doing this and you have that. And then we'll go back to the overriding principle. Experience has shown that communities faced with epidemics or other adverse events respond best and with the least anxiety when the normal social functioning of the community is least disrupted. Strong political and public health leadership to provide, to provide reassurance and to ensure that the needed medical care services are provided are critical elements. If either is seen to be less than optimal, a manageable academic could move toward catastrophe. So is what we're doing providing reassurance and providing that there are the needed medical care services? Or are we not providing reassurance and causing additional stress? I, I mean, I go back to this and it's, it's almost precedent how he's written everything. You just follow along and every, every recommendation they made and what they would say the consequences would be if you didn't follow it? It's almost like they saw it coming.
Carl, to your point, I, I'd like to just say, I think one of the reasons this has become so difficult is because it was so drastic at the beginning. It was two weeks to flatten it, but it's about eighteen months. We're still here. But what the CDC has said keeps changing, Fauci keeps changing, and there's a lot of confusion because there's, these experts say this. This study says this. On the other side, it's the complete opposite. Then there's people trying to shut each other down over, that's not a fact. You can't say that. And, you know, things like that. And so it has just become a very trying situation. And I, I didn't live through measles. That was before my time. But I, I don't know if it was anything like that. But I, I think that's what part of the, part of the issue is. So.
Well, I guess, I was all I'm saying is we tend to raise this to such an emotional level. But sometimes we are reluctant to do something that may be just a simple little thing to, to help the situation somewhat. And it's just, to me, the, the test to stay thing is such a minimally invasive thing. The parents are being reached out to. They don't, the kids don't have to do it. They're not required to do it. And, and if they ought, desire to opt out, they can. And I, I guess I just sit back and say, really, what's the big deal? I don't.
They can, but they have to stay home, right?
Well, but still.
They have to stay home. But the one thing that I take issue with is, okay, we test all the, we test all the youth in the class and eighty-nine percent of them, ninety percent of them don't test positive. And so they get to stay in the class and ten days later, the same class has got some additional thing. So they have to go through and do all the testing. This testing does not keep people from becoming sick. It doesn't keep people from becoming immune to it. It just kicks it down the road a ways. And, you know, I, I hope people aren't thinking that I'm against vaccination and that because I had a herd of dairy cows for fifty years. And if I didn't vaccinate my dry cows, if I didn't vaccinate my little calves, if I didn't vaccinate and vaccinate and vaccinate and vaccinated, I didn't have a herd, a healthy herd of cows. So the day that I was eligible to get the vaccine, I was in there because I know what vaccines can do to elk. But I don't have to, I guess I don't feel too good about forcing people to do things, in my opinion, that aren't necessary. I mean, I would love every one of my grandkids to get COVID, to get natural immunity to it and to go on because the chances of them getting really, really sick, like some of us have done, is just almost minimal. And we're, we're kicking the can down the road. The only way that we're going to get through this pandemic is to get enough immunity to it that it hasn't got the effect on us that it's got now. And you can't do that if you avoid everything, you know. The, the only thing that what I'm saying that's wrong, and that is, is when you get all these people sick and they have to go to the hospital, then that's a concern. But as far as our, our young kids and our high school kids, they're tough as nails. And, you know, the percentage of it having a huge impact in their life is so small. Granted that those that do really get sick, you just have your heart blown to them. But it's here. The only way that you're going to get through it is you're going to have to get some form of immunity to it. And if you don't figure out a way to get some form of immunity to it, then you're playing Russian roulette. It eventually will grab you at some point. And anyway, I, last time I made my statement, I ended up with front page news and people from Salt Lake wanted to interview me. And the only other thing, but my position has still changed, not changed much. But, I mean, I got lots of grandkids. All my grandkids are in elementary school.
Well, it is a divisive issue and it doesn't matter what we do, somebody's going to be mad at us, you know? That's just how it is. David, did you want to say something now, or should we have John go?
My other question here is that. So the process was, is that you, you writ, wrote the health order? And you sent it to Mr. Z, Executive Z?
And the council.
And the council?
Yeah.
You had seventy-two hours from that point? Okay, I want to know what was your stance at that point?
Well, I considered whether or not I should overturn it, but I had conversations with your chair, Gina Worthen, about it. And she told me that she reached out to all of you and that you were supportive of it.
I think that was a misunderstanding. I only knew that, by the time that came out, I only knew of one person that was supportive. I had no, I had no idea what the others, and we had three that were out of town. So I'm sorry for the misunderstanding, but no, the council wasn't in support of it. The council was, I don't know how they feel about it. Yeah.
I don't think you'll know until we vote, will you?
No, I don't. There's, there's a couple that I know because I kept trying to figure out what we needed to do, if the council wanted it on the agenda or not. I had originally told Jordan, well, I don't know, so we'll put it on after, at thirty days because you asked for an extension possibly. But then I had a council member ask to put it on this agenda. So I don't really, I don't really know how it will go. So I apologize for any misunderstanding there.
Can I speak to the process on the Health Department side? I mean, I took this, I, I told Gina that I wouldn't bring it, push it, push it towards another governing board unless my governing board approved it. So we took it to the Board of Health. They approved it. Then we went to, and David was not able to attend that meeting. We then took it to the school districts and got input from them on this issue. And they gave the thumbs up. And then before issuing the twenty-four hour notice, I issued it to all county elected officials for any feedback on it. And I only heard from one elected official in Rich County with regards, well, and one from, a, a slight one from Boxhelder County through another county commissioner. So I, before I actually gave it to the county executives, I did give it to every county elected official for feedback, asked to get that feedback back to me by Tuesday. I then issued the twenty-four hour notice to the county executives on a Thursday evening. So that's, that's the process we went through on the Health Department side of things.
Now, I did, and I, maybe I didn't in that twenty-four hour period, but maybe before you did, I did correspond with you and ask about, could we just test symptomatic kids, not asymptomatic kids? Did I not say that?
Probably, yeah.
You know, I, I think one thing that we would all agree with what I'm going to say here, and that is, is there is just as many people passionate on one side as there is passionate on the other side. And so we hear, we hear confusion. We hear opinions. And it's not easy because they all make good points and they all are fairly understanding of what's going on and how they feel, even though they're.
They all quote experts from one side or the other side.
That's exactly right. I mean, if there was ever a bunch of confusion out there, we're, we're experiencing it. And so I, I look at, I look at the, I look at the cases. I divide the cases by the deaths. And we're talking less than one percent. And we're talking less than one percent. I mean, it is so low that I think we're just emotional about it because we do all know somebody that's passed away. But percentage wise, there's many other diseases that we went through in America that is just as deadly as this one.
And Gordon, one of the reasons, I hear you because I get both sides as well, right? I think I get all the emails you guys get. I'm usually included on those. And that's why I looked at the precedence of something such as head lice. Is once you have that, a certain threshold in a classroom, you screen everyone and you try to take a reasonable measure. And in all honesty, this was my effort to try to find some sort of middle ground in the polarization that's out there over this issue. And it was an honest effort. I admit that it may not be perfect. But it was an effort to fulfill my responsibility that says, you shall control the spread of infectious disease.
That's right. There's no question you're doing the very best you can with the parameters that you're given. But I still hold to the thing that we can test and we can test every kid in the class that's had three COVID cases. And in ten days, we'll do it again. We can, that's a possibility. We'll do it again.
So one piece of data is, we've now done tests to stay at multiple schools. And on a school-wide level, we're furthest out on those schools in Davis County. But they've seen a steep drop off in the cases in those schools. The tests to stay seem to have had some sort of impact. Whether it's impacting the disease or it's impacting testing behavior, we don't know because there's confounding issues there. But it's impacting that. And we're seeing the same thing at Mountain Crest over the, tomorrow will be a week and we're at the lowest level we've been since the beginning of September in that population.
Does that differ from the rest of the county?
Yeah, well, so I had our epidemiologist look at that. So the decline, he compared it to the decline we saw in Skyview, which was a slow decline in cases. And this decline goes like this. It just drops off. So, I mean, you see that big increase. You remove those positive cases and it appears, credit to our legislators, that there was some wisdom in that test to stay, that removing those positive cases has an impact on spread in a community such as a school setting.
But, and so if you compare Mountain Crest to Skyview, because Skyview had it a little bit earlier when our case counts were still rising, hence this order. And Mountain Crest came after the cases already started to fall. Did your epidemiologists make any adjustments based on community spread? When, say, and Mountain Crest fell faster than Skyview did, but Skyview happened. What community spread was actually on the uptick for Mountain Crest happened? What community spread was on the downward slide? So those would be, you'd have to adjust somewhat to compare those numbers with.
Yeah, you would, but those two communities have almost acted independent of one another in the way that we saw spread go through them, right? So they were all both on different, if you ask me, they were a little bit on a delayed Epi curve down in the south part of the valley. So, I don't know. I mean.
So help me understand if we.
I don't know that that's, go ahead.
We, let's suppose that we voted yes. Let's go ahead and give this to try to see what will happen. Is this going to go on and on and on all school year? Or we, have we got a thing that we're going to try to accomplish here?
You have the, if you vote it, you have to renew it every thirty days by statute, correct? In the order itself, it says it automatically expires sixty days past the EUA for vaccine. At that point, you have vaccine equity across the population. And therefore, the measure that the Health Department is recommending would be vaccinated immunity as opposed to natural immunity. Trying to seek that out. And then we would just, if we ever hit a test to stay threshold, it'd be on a school level. But that's a shall in state code, not underneath the Health Department's purview. I mean, we just support the schools in that. Does that make sense?
Yeah, back to what I was asking is that, so in this process, Executive Z, you could have, from your office, you could have just said, hey, we're going to not do this. And you could have sent that order, or I should say, delayed that order or got rid of that order from your office.
Terminated.
You chose not to. So now we have it as a council, right? Okay, and that's where, at this point, I would say that we, with all this information, and to me, it is terrific. It is, I think it's wonderful dialogue. I'm glad we're talking about this out loud and not, you know, just behind the doors and all that stuff. I don't think it has to be divisive. It really doesn't. But I am in favor of just taking this information and then we'll look at it on the, to delay it, delay our decision until that second week of October.
October twelfth? Okay, is that a motion?
I would make that motion.
I'll second that.
Okay, it's moved and seconded.
I just want time to digest all this.
We delay making a decision on this until October twelfth. But yes, usually call for further discussion. And I know that John wanted to say something.
One quick discussion on that. So we can talk about either terminating the order or maybe working, because George's been great to work with. We've had a lot of good discussions, highly respect him. I get to ask tough questions. He gets to ask tough questions. It's a great thing and it's respectful, which I wish everybody in the community would do. I mean, some people, you know, have not been respectful to us, as you well know. And I try to be respectful to everyone. And that's, I think, been the biggest disappointment in all of this, is we're all facing this. Every one of us has had, has lost loved ones or lost friends or have had relatives in the hospital for long periods of time or suffered through this. So a little grace and a little compassion in our community could go a long, long way. Because regardless of where you come down on any issue, I don't know anybody up here that doesn't care about our children, care about our family members and care about our community functioning and having it be a good place. So the divisiveness has got to stop. And that doesn't mean we can't ask hard questions and have difficult discussions. But we need to be respectful.
So now, the way I understand it, it will go into effect at least for.
It's already in effect. It's in effect. It started September twentieth and it will go through October twentieth, right? Okay, before we vote on this, John wanted to advise us.
I wanted to touch on a couple of things that weren't mentioned expressly here, but because I've also received public input and know that those, that the same input has reached at least some of you, I wanted to raise that as well. One of those things is whether the test to stay program under state statute, not the one that Jordan has issued, but the one under state statute, whether someone has to test to stay. And that there was a settlement agreement out of Summit County where some entities said, our view of the statute is you don't have to actually test to stay. I just, and you, I have heard, and I know some of you have heard citizens saying, that is precedent, that settlement agreement is precedent that this county ought to follow. If you look at the statutory definition of test to stay program, which is that subsection H up there. Test to stay program means a program through which an LEA provides testing for COVID-19 students. Two, sub one, identify cases of COVID-19. And sub two, allow individuals who test negative to attend school in person. You can't test negative without testing. So I wanted you to know that my office does not interpret that the same way that you may have seen in a settlement agreement elsewhere. You do have to actually test to test negative. And so I don't know how those settling parties arrived at a conclusion that that's not required.
Would your office consider a former, you know, a positive test for COVID? So you've naturally recovered, be able to say, I don't need to test to test negative. I can show you evidence.
Yeah, I think that fits within testing negative.
We did that at Mountain Crest, too.
I think that's important for people to know that that's, again, very nuanced.
The other issue that's been raised with me has to do with freedoms being infringed upon. And on that, no, on that particular point, I would note that whether freedoms in our constitutional system are being infringed upon has a whole lot more to do with process than with the particular mandate or restriction by government. Here's what I mean by that. The rally cry prior to the revolution was not no taxation. It was no taxation without representation. The founders didn't say government can't require things of us. They said, we need proper process. Constitution Day at Casey Snyder's, I picked up another copy of the Constitution and read it this last week, along with the Declaration that recounts the long train of abuses by King George. None of them, that I could see, identify a particular mandate. And I won't read them because of the time of the meeting. But you read through them and they have to do with process. The king shuts down the legislature and so forth. It's process. There is safety in our process on this. Jordan proposes twenty-four hours and then seventy-two hours and then you've got a review and then further review. And then Jordan could take more action and then you could take more. And then you can get courts involved to strike it down or whatever. There is plenty of process. And there are mandates as equal or more onerous, whether it's to wear a seatbelt, to wear a blouse in public, to turn your headlights on, don't build on the front thirty feet of your property. We have plenty of government mandate that we aren't out saying, my freedom's being infringed upon. Because the process is there to make sure that it's not a mandate from a dictator. So I think that for people to say that a test to stay program that has multiple levels of review and check and balance is an infringement on freedom is not accurate. And I haven't heard that from any of you, but I've heard it from the public and want to say that publicly.
I think that's a great time just to say, I think the process has been good, as you've seen. And I hope everybody has communicated with me, seeing I'm willing to engage in the discussion and have the process. And as I look what's happening across the country, some areas are getting it right, some areas are not. But while they're here, Representative Snyder and Senator Wilson, thank you. Thank you. I think the Utah Legislature has done a great job of trying to, I mean, subsidiary is a big thing in America, right? What you could do at the local level, you do what you need the state, you know, the county to do outside of a city and so on. So the more you can push the power and distribute it and give it to the people to be able to monitor their own affairs and go through that process, the better it is. I think we've really done a great job in Utah.
I'm going to use an anecdote from today to preface my last remark. The county today experienced a suicide attempt. We've had, as you know, almost epidemic proportion there. Thirty-six to date in the county this year. I believe last year we had somewhere between eight and twelve all year. That person received CPR, was taken to an emergency room and lifelike came and waited over an hour and a half. Terrell can give us more detail. Four hours to get into an ICU room in Utah. They're full. They were looking at trying to fly them to Nevada. Whether that person makes it may depend on that four-hour delay. COVID plays a part in that, that we all know this is an ongoing thing. And suicide is our other epidemic, if not pandemic. The, in the law, our trial courts hear facts and decide cases and apply the facts. And you go up on appeal, if it has to do with, did you apply the facts to the law correctly? The appellate court doesn't hold a new trial. The Supreme Court doesn't invite all the witnesses in and you retry the case. For those kinds of appeals, the court exercises some, the appellate court exercises some restraint and says, the trial court was on the front line, has some expertise there. And as long as the trial court didn't abuse its discretion, we're going to affirm. If I were sitting as the trial judge, I might have come up with a different decision. But where the appellate court, as long as what they did was within a range of reason, we're going to affirm. Then they say, but if we're interpreting the law, then yeah. Our appellate courts get to go back and do it from scratch and give no deference to the lower court. Your review of the Health Department's order, you're not told whether it's de novo, you start from scratch, or whether it's abuse of discretion. But I'd suggest to you to take an abuse of discretion stance. Part, I believe, of the, what contributes to the distress, the division, confusion, and therefore hopelessness that leads to suicide is our lack of trust in public institutions, our contention and division. And for, with all due respect, non-medical people to take a de novo review of what the medical professionals are saying and then essentially say to the public, we don't trust our medical professionals. When we look at it, we decide better. In my mind, at this stage of the pandemic, does not bring trust to public institutions. It does not bring reassurance to the population and especially our kids. I've got kids. I'd let a swab go up their nostril. I've had the one to the back of my head. I don't know that I'd allow that, but I'd let the one in their nostril so that there can be reassurance that when I go to school, I'm not going to be infected. And more than that, let's say, let's send the message of trust. We trust our health professionals in this county. And yes, this dialogue is essential. But I'd urge you to engage in this dialogue from an abuse of discretion standpoint. Is the Health Department's order of constraint within the realm of reasonableness for where we are? Can we stay unified rather than send a message that, man, even our local health department can't get it right? That's my thoughts on, with a reflection on the law.
John, thank you. I do want to respond to something in there because I get a lot of emails to that point of let the experts decide. As a legislative body, it is our duty to take all the information that we can get and filter it and figure out what the best public policy is. And sometimes different experts are singularly focused on something. And there are other considerations to make, especially if you think back to the first of this pandemic and the letter that we wrote as a council asking to go to Green because the singular focus had been to shut everything down. But in doing so, we had seen an increase in domestic violence. We had seen an increased use of the food bank. We were seeing an increase in suicide. At one point, we had more suicides in the valley. At one point, we had more suicides in the valley than we had deaths from COVID. And so there was more to consider. And so I feel that as a legislative body, it is our duty, and it doesn't have to do with not trusting, has to do with taking all the information we can get because experts in every county differ, right?
So I don't want to be misunderstood on what I just said.
Okay.
I think you still need to gather all the information to know whether someone has abused their discretion in making a decision based on that information. And I'm not weighing on, in on orders or decisions that were made earlier in the pandemic, but at this point in the pandemic, earlier or later, I'd suggest that as you gather all that information, that the question not be, did they get it right or wrong? But have they made a decision that's within the realm of reasonableness for where we are now?
Thank you, John.
Madam Chair, so I just suggest we have a motion.
Yes, they're calling the question.
To move this forward to.
Call the question, please.
Call the question.
Is there any objection? Okay, proceed to vote. Motion is to delay taking any action on this item until our October 12 meeting. Correct? Okay, all in favor?
And I say that.
Oh, I'm sorry.
If you have a few more emails, because you might get a few.
Yeah, I'm sure we will.
A few.
We're coming.
And that's fine. We'll, I think it's, I think it's great to have a dialogue and move from there, so.
Okay, so all in favor of the motion?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstention? Okay, we'll put this back on the agenda for October 12.
So just to be clear, the order stands? We did not overturn it?
The order stands. We didn't do anything. Yeah, the order is still in place and we will revisit on October 12. Okay. I've been asked by the clerk, the auditor, without objection from the council, if we could quickly move to 11D property tax relief request because he has to leave. So we have two property tax relief requests, and the issues with them, and Jess can explain more, but basically the issue with them is the first, the first one did not turn in the required tax, tax returns, and there's concern that there is money being made off of some investments that, that may have matured and been able for this person to get them. And the second one is that this person, if you remember when the pandemic started, they had a home business, they couldn't go to conventions and sell their wares and lost their job and ask us to give them tax exemption that, or, you know, tax exemption that year, but now is asking again during a time when there's plenty of places to find a job. So those are the two. Auditor Bradfield, do you want to fill us in on any more than that?
No, I think you've done a good job expla, well, yes, I think you've done a good job explaining it. This is probably one of the least favorite aspects of my job is discussing personal finances of people who are asking for exemptions and giving us all their information. Tugs at the heartstrings quite a bit. But in these two cases, I've gone back and forth with Diana Schaefer to reach this. We, we discuss these, we have long discussions, and in both cases, we recommend denial.
Recommend denial in both cases, thank you. Counsel, any discussion or I'll entertain a motion?
Can I ask a question? And that's partly because we have not received all the information from those citizens as to what they have as investments or whatever else. Is that correct?
For one of them, that is correct.
Yeah, we usually don't use the name, we just use the, the number of their property. So the first one, 7320?
As I read through those, I concur. We want, we want to be able to provide relief when there is a legitimate need. But if the legitimate need has not been demonstrated, they've been withholding the information necessary for us to determine that, I don't see that we have much of a, much of any kind of a, an option other than to recommend denial. And so I would move that we recommend denial on both of these hardship requests.
Second.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded to deny both of these property tax relief requests. Is there any further discussion? Speaking of, we'll proceed to vote. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstention? Passes unanimously.
Thank you, counsel.
Thank you. Okay, we'll now move to item 11A, ordinance 21, 202121. That's a tongue twister. Amendments to Title 17 to allow a winery. Can you give us some more on this?
Schedule of Wine and Health Directive.
We should have talked about the cheese fest, too, then we could have wine and cheese.
I didn't know if we were going to make it here, so here we are. This has been a great process to work through the winery discussion. You've been through this a lot longer than the Planning Commission has, as you've considered the ordinance amendment that allowed alcohol production in the county. So you're just seeing the back end of all of this. What I've got here is kind of a brief overview of some of the pieces that were involved with. What you have before you is a recommendation from the Planning Commission, a unanimous recommendation from them so far as the requirements that may be attached to the winery use-related definition. So I'll go through that. There's really three sections we're going to talk about. We're going to talk about timeline, those guiding questions that I referenced with you, and then that proposed land use amendment. So as we look at kind of that timeline, April 2021, the code was amended to allow that act, wow, I can't say it apparently, alcohol production.
Been drinking.
I left my bottle back at my seat. I don't know what's in it. But then again, or, sorry, specifically to that, that required, again, the, trying to fluster me.
Sorry.
That required the, the Planning Commission, or the council in this case, first to consider a land use ordinance amendment and then adopt a land use ordinance amendment before that ordinance to allow alcohol production could take effect. That's our part that we're looking at. So initially, the council looked at a couple of different options. You looked at if you were going to amend the agritourism ordinance to include this piece, or you would create a separate use type that would address this. With much discussion, it was decided that a single use type would be addressed because it was a simpler, clearer process. But there would be need in the future to amend the county agritourism ordinance. But in this case, it was simply for the winery use type. And the commission agrees with that. They think that's the best approach. Oh, I'm going to draw one point that, that kind of ties into these things. The commission had this discussion quite a bit is what, how are we drawing this line between agrotours, I'm sorry, agriculture and manufacturing? That gets to be somewhat of a gray line sometimes, and agriculture and commercial operations. And so agritourism is walking that line very closely. And so they were trying to be very aware as they assigned some requirements to this winery use type that would help to clarify that distinction. I think I've already covered some of these pieces. They did have a public hearing, and they have that recommendation before you for ordinance 2021-21 to amend the county land use code. So these are the questions that you discussed, and I'm just going to skip through these unless you have specific questions. I don't want to take a ton of time in addressing these unless there is an issue. First of all, how can the scale of the operation be limited? The most obvious thing is, we had our discussion, was to restrict the number of cases that the winery could produce in a year. So as that was reviewed, we looked at a number of different cases, case limitations, to see what number of cases produced an impact that would be reasonable. So they looked at about 1,000, they looked at a 5,000 limit, and they looked at this 15,000 limit, and determined that within that range, that was reasonable to go all the way up to 15,000 cases within a year's time. Because there wasn't a big distinction, distinction between 15,000 to 5,000 to 1,000 so far as the impact. Something else that was brought up was maybe the need in the future for a phased approach that would consider different levels of wineries. And that may fit in our current approach in stating that agricultural manufacturing may allow an additional increase, but they would have to then rezone and pursue additional approvals through the county. The second question was, what are the possible impacts to the ag zone? Looking at the 15,000 cases of wine per year seem to have a pretty small impact in the A-10 zone. We were looking at things like traffic primarily, maybe noise, maybe smells, those types of things are fairly typical in the agricultural use, so it didn't seem to, to add an additional impact. I'm going to skip down, this is a continuation of that question. If you look at what a typical semi-trailer might pull in and out of that, to give you some reference, standard wine bottle has 750 milliliters of wine, standard case of wine has 12 bottles. A pallet of wine typically holds 56 cases. And there's approximately 20 pallets that you can fit on a 40-foot-long reefer, refrigerated semi-trailer. That's about 1,120 cases per semi-trailer. So if you were to accommodate that, now granted, I'm sure a semi isn't going to come in and pick up 1,100 cases every time, but it gives you a picture of what that traffic may be, what it might look like to accommodate 15,000 cases. Now, that would be a pretty successful, fully functioning operation. I think most of these operations, as they get going, aren't going to hit that 15,000 cases right off the bat. It will be a gradual phased growth. This 15,000 allows growth to occur. So that's something else that the Planning Commission was trying to be conscientious of, is are we setting up a use where they're going to immediately fail because there's not a sufficient amount of flexibility? So that's what the 15,000 also reflects. See here. We also went and visited Slide Ridge, which is a local winery in Menden, to get kind of a feel for what their operation was. It wasn't quite apples to apples on the comparison because they handle 20 to 30 cases of wine per year as opposed to 15,000. There are some pretty strict and challenging regulations when you look at different code requirements between the states. Each state has its own rules for how you handle alcohol, so if you're going to sell outside of the state of Utah, there's some challenges associated with that. And if you're not equipped to handle those challenges, it's, it's difficult. But it did give our commission a pretty good feel for what might be involved for this type of a production. And they felt very confident with the 15,000 case limit, based on what they saw. Third question, how is the preservation of ag land encouraged? There are some restrictions that you'll see as we work through this piece of code, that each sec of requirements limits what can happen. So we're going to look at this really quickly. First, it has to be accessory to a primary ag production use. Second, it has to be on land that qualifies as land under ag use under the Farmland Assessment Act. Typically, you're going to consider green belt as a reference there. It's got to be a minimum of five acres that's in production. So if they've got five acres but then have a house or a structure on it, that's just subtracted from that area. Now, I know enough about the taxes to get me in trouble, so that's all I'm going to say on the tax end. But we, we would recommend, and what we did recently with a similar type agritourism use that came through our planning commission, is we discussed this with the county assessor's office, with Dixie Page, and with Kathleen if needed, to see if they can qualify under the Farmland Assessment Act as land in agricultural production. So that would be the same here, is we refer and, and rely upon our county assessor to help us make that determination. Let's see. Question three again, we identified a minimum of 51% of the ag products must be grown within the county. Now, we went all over the place on this discussion, whether it's 51% or what the percent is and where it needs to come from. And in looking at the realities of how a winery would operate, it's again, we needed to leave flexibility in where product needed to come from. So if there was a specific area in the county, let's, let's say the site was directly affected and all the material had to come from the site, that's an immediate impact. So as you read through this, you'll notice that there's two exceptions at the end. That's specific to natural disasters and it's specific to initial startup. There's some exception given for where some of that material can be pulled from outs, off the site, outside of the county even. But those are very specific instances. Question four, how can the impact on neighboring properties be limited? The biggest thing we can point to there is the primary use of the property is ag. It has to be the primary use. The question you're going to have to start thinking about as a council and the commission will, is when we talk about agritourism, is where that line starts to get blurred. Where does the county expect to have agritourism occur? What zone does it occur in? How do we address that specifically when we start placing this next to residential-type properties? A winery out in the middle of a bunch of ag land is not going to have an impact or probably even be noticed. But when you start putting it next to homes, like where this would be, well, one of the anticipated locations would be is right adjacent to a lot of residential communities and neighborhoods. So that right now is what we have primarily is, it's got to be primarily agriculture and qualify as farm, or sorry, land under agricultural use by, as determined by the Farmland Assessment Act. It's also got to be located on parcel, a parcel or parcels that are a minimum of five acres in size. That means that they can be multiple contiguous acres that are attached to each other, that combined would equal more than five acres. So if you have a parcel of property, whether you want to put the winery that's only two acres in size, but have an adjoining piece that's three or four or five acres, you can combine those and get your sufficient acreage to meet that requirement. The other thing we've noted is the number of cases is limited, no more than 15,000 cases of wine per year, and it's only permitted in the A-10, FR-40, and resort recreation zones. So it's not permitted in our, our rural two and rural five-acre residential specific zones. Really, I see the primary impact, when we start talking about residential impacts, would be in the A-10 zone where you also allow single-family dwellings. Fifth question is, how is access to these types of facilities addressed? That will be through our conditional use permit process. So the county engineer is going to look at this request when we submit, or someone submits an application for this type of use, and we send it out for review, and they'll have to meet any requirements that the road manual currently requires. There's not an additional requirement that we would see as being necessary for this type of use. Question six, what amendments to the agritourism definition are needed? I referenced that earlier. At the beginning of the public hearing, there was one change in referencing the definition of what, of what small scale might mean, and that's talking about the small-scale slaughter facility that was recently adopted, and also wineries. To exclude them as being qualified as small-scale processing facilities, indicating that for an approval to be issued for those, they couldn't qualify under agritourism, they could only qualify under those separate use types. And I've already referenced this also, we do recommend in the future amending agritourism ordinance language.
Do you want to do that before the whole general plan? Or do you want to do it within the general plan?
I don't want to think about it right now. Is that fair?
You just, you just tell me that later.
I, I think, I think from a timing standpoint, my preference is after the general plan.
It depends what year the general plan comes out.
I can address that, too, but maybe later. I've had a couple of questions that from, from David and from council members about when that might happen, and I asked that question to our consultant today, so I can give you some current feedback. But those are the questions you ask the council or a commission to look at. And so they looked at those, and those are their responses, with staff's input also, on how those were best addressed. And so I'd really be curious if there were concerns with those items that were addressed, those questions that were addressed, that we address those maybe as we look at the code, and I can take some of those, take some of that direction if needed. What I'd like to do right now, then, is look at the proposed land use amendment. I'll pull that up on a PDF here. And look at that use-related definition, the schedule of zoning uses, and that small change on the use-related definition for agritourism.
Are they picking grapes out there?
You guys remember where this is, don't you? Is there a prize if you can name this picture?
White pine.
That was my guess, white pine.
Tony Grove, yeah.
Tony Grove.
It's pretty nice.
Is there wine in Tony Grove area?
I don't know why you're, I don't know why you're asking me.
It's a short-grown C-grape.
Here at the submarine races.
There we go. All right, let's scroll through here real quick. Oh, I'm in the wrong document, my apologies.
I'm hanging up.
Here we are. All right. First of all, something that's going to be important when we talk about a winery is the definition of what we mean. So this is going to come back to the ordinance you adopted, and taking on the definitions that the state ascribes to what a winery is and what it means. So I'm going to read it, just for the record, I guess. But a winery is an agricultural processing facility used for the commercial purpose of processing fruits, plants, honey, or milk, or other like substance to produce wine. So that's a pretty broad window. Oftentimes, when we say winery, we think grapes, and we think specific to that, and it's not. It's much broader than that.
Gordy's been running a winery all this time.
Can you make wine out of milk? I can get some behind.
Three raisins at room temperature. Never mind.
We looked it up, and it doesn't look like something you'd ever want to drink, but it exists. It exists.
My grandpa used to ferment a cherry.
Yeah.
He loved that stuff.
So you can see also that processing has a lot of pieces to it. Processing includes wholesale and retail sales. That's contemplating the fact that the winery may want to sell their product at their site. Now, they still have to meet all the state rules with that. There's packaging agency rules, and you'll see some of that also included in your packet of what that means. I'm not going to go into the details there, because that's outside of the scope of the land use requirement, but it is part of the alcohol ordinance that you adopted. Crushing, fermenting, blending, aging, storage, bottling, and administrative office functions. And then again, it points to that section that you've adopted in Title 5.08, that apply to that use type. The following requirements also apply, and here's where you start to restrict where this can occur. Oh, that, that was too quick. Let's try that again. So a winery must be accessory to a primary ag production use. That means the primary use of the property is for agriculture. It doesn't specify what type of ag is occurring there, it just has to qualify as agricultural production. A winery must be located on land that qualifies as land under agricultural use, under the Farmland Assessment Act, as stated there, and then be located on a legal parcel or contiguous legal parcels. Now, just tonight, as I was reading through this and having some discussion with another staff member here, I'm going to recommend for clarity that that be amended to read. Be located on a legal parcel or contiguous legal parcels that are a total of five acres or larger in size, just for clarity.
That goes along with your green belt.
Yes.
Definition, doesn't it, then?
Yes. And it extends it just a little bit.
Yeah, but you said total of five.
Correct. Minimum.
So I could have two parcels less than five that are totaling five, right?
Correct.
And that doesn't meet the green belt.
It does meet the green belt.
They don't have to be continuous?
And I'll tell you why this is there, for clarity.
Can't there be the two to get green belt status together?
Yes.
Yes.
You can. So under the Farmland Assessment Act, those green belt rules can be used to apply to parcels that aren't even contiguous.
But under that law, don't they say they have to own those, not access them as rental or anything else?
Correct. So those parcels, under the Farmland Assessment Act, you have two pieces there. So first, it's the Farmland Assessment Act, which is a broader scope. So we're starting here with this, and we keep narrowing that window. So first, we're saying it's got to be land under ag production. Second, we're saying it has to qualify under the Farmland Assessment Act, which says, I could have the winery on a two-acre parcel, but five miles away, I could have 50 acres that qualify, and that means I can piggyback those together, and it would qualify under the Farmland Assessment Act, if it met all the other rules, right? So the next step down from there is saying, not only do you have to qualify under the Farmland Assessment Act, you also have to have legal contiguous parcels that are five acres or larger in size. So it's taking that five acres and saying, you also have to have five acres on your property. You have to have five acres, period, and that helps create some of that, or reduce some of that impact that may be perceived for neighboring properties. Now, the next step we take is number three. Wine produced by the processing facility must be produced from 51% or more of the agricultural products that have been grown within the legally defined boundaries of Cache County. Initially, that said, legally defined boundaries of the property. And that was too restrictive. That's really not a realistic approach for how that needs to function. And so it was expanded to the boundaries of Cache County. And there are some exceptions to that, as I noted earlier. Let's read those. The winery may use agricultural products grown outside the county to produce wine, and a local wine producer may use bulk, or purchase bulk beverage fermented, brewed, or distilled by a licensed alcohol manufacturer and blend the beverage with the local producer's alcoholic beverage, basically bringing something in from outside to produce their product, if there is insufficient supply of ag products within Cache County due to an event caused by a natural, by natural phenomena whose effects were not preventable with the exercise of reasonable care and foresight. That is fairly subjective. I'll tell you right now, that's fairly subjective, but it gives some level of intent for what that is intended to cover. There's flexibility there. The second one, or the onsite and local agricultural product is not yet of a sufficient quantity to support the production of wine, but sufficient resources that will be used as part of the wine production in the form of planted vines, plants, trees, hives, and similar are present, and of an equivalent amount to support the quantity of product to be produced. So this considers that initial startup. What all that language is intended to do is prevent someone from showing up on the site, saying, you know, in five years, I'm going to have however many hives or vines or whatever it is, so I want to start producing from this moment to that extent. This says they have to have it onsite, or it's, they're limited in what they can produce. That's what it's intended to do. So at that point, that's where we've whittled this down as close as we can to that restriction. The next section is a little bit different. It isn't, it does a little bit of that, but it's not about the ag use, it's not about the land, it's something else. Now, we're talking about retail sales, tours, tasting facilities, and I'll read that here. Those, or, where am I? Retail sales, tours, tours, and tasting facilities of wine-related accessory promotional items are also permitted as part of the winery operation. And then there's some subheadings. So a retail sale, tour, or tasting means tours of the winery or tasting of beverages produced by the winery, or both during operating hours. The wine producer may serve food in conjunction with tours and tastings provided, the amount and type of food is intended to be secondary and complementary to and part of the tours and tastings, and the food arrives at the establishment ready for service, or an estate generally ready for consumption. So that's referring to the fact that this is a tasting winery, not a restaurant with alcohol on the side. The primary purpose of this use is for the tasting in the winery. There are some requirements under the state rules that say that they need to have some food on the site and accommodate that, but that's not the primary purpose of that use. Let's see. Number five, this is again another restriction on the winery. Production of wine is limited to no more than 15,000 cases per calendar year. Just as a reminder, this is something that they can grow too. Most wineries, I don't anticipate, would go straight to that point, but we haven't done this before. This is new to the county, and this is certainly feels like a middle ground to me that leaves room for flexibility for growth, and doesn't artificially block what a business should be able to do in their growth. The last one, number six, is something that was requested by the council to be added, and you can start to feel the flavor of agritourism in this, because it's a straight copy paste from the agritourism ordinance that allows overnight accommodation at the site. Now, it is fairly challenging, because it does require for overnight accommodation that it's a guest room within an owner-occupied dwelling. Still has to meet building code requirements, so that's fairly restrictive from the case of not allowing a full recreational type use, where it's a separate structure and separate dwelling for those types of folks to stay at and enjoy.
Was there a reason on that?
Why it was restricted?
Yeah.
I think for me, if I remember correctly, it came back with agritourism, of trying to draw that line carefully between what was still related to ag and what was now more of a recreational or commercial type activity.
We had a fairly lengthy discussion about that.
And it's...
We didn't want to turn into a hotel.
Yeah. I have a question. It has nothing to do with this ordinance, but it's in my mind, and I've got to get an answer for it. How many cases of wine can five acres of grapes produce? Does anybody know?
I can't remember to tell you. I know we've had that discussion, and I don't remember off the top of my head.
Is it a lot? I don't know.
I could refer to the applic-
Couple thousand.
What's that?
Could be lucky to put out a couple thousand. If anything, I produce.
So in five acres, you're not going to make 15,000 cases of?
No. Fifteen thousand a case of winery, you know, we're probably getting close to 60 acres or whatever.
Yeah, that's, that's, you'd have to be a pretty big operation.
But that's for grapes, I would assume.
That's great.
So remember, winery's broader. And so I can't, I can't say for certain what that would mean for apples, or milk, or potatoes.
Watermelon.
I don't know. That's a challenging question to address.
There's a song about that, isn't there?
So we really are testing something new for the county, and we're going to have to learn through this. I guarantee you, this quote isn't perfect. As soon as we test it, we'll find all the holes, which unfortunately is how that tends to function when we haven't done it before. We've done the best we can pulling from other resources to say what seems to work for the county here, but I do feel like we just put our toe in the water, and we're not quite, got our head wrapped all the way around what this means, because it's going to tie into some bigger pieces that we haven't talked about yet.
Does this section cover hard cider? Is it?
Yes.
I thought it was in there when we originally did it. Because I know there's people, I was approached by 10 years ago, people in paradise that wanted to do hard cider.
Yeah, fruits, plants, honey, or milk, or other like substance. It's pretty broad.
And I noticed I finally found my loose of four rooms. It went here rather than the other ordinance.
Yeah, four rooms right here. No more than, no more than four guest rooms, with a maximum of two per room. I don't remember why the 15-year age limit is there. I don't, I don't recall. Yeah. I'm going to skip down really quickly to this other piece, it's probably a little less controversial. Schedule of zoning uses identifies that this use would be allowed as a conditionally permitted use in the A-ten, FR-40, and resort recreation zones only. So that's the...
That's what I don't like.
Yeah, you throw conditionally use permit on this, and you got it.
Oh, it's guaranteed approval, yeah.
I don't like that part.
I do not like the FR-40 or the RR.
That's amendable, it's just there, that's the recommendation.
I think, I think just keep it in the ag zone, and that, then you're tied to agritourism, you just keep it in the ag zone.
That makes a clear indicator of that it is tied to ag. I agree.
Yeah.
I would agree.
I don't, I don't think the commission has a strong opinion or a strong recommendation either way there.
FR-40, that's like back, backwoods moon shining, you know? I don't know, I just sit there going, I don't really want to open up to that.
No, I want to ask you about any stills you know about, Dave.
That means you don't have to haul your own beer when you go four-wheeling. You stop off at a place and get it.
Is there...
Those are the two. I, I, I have a heartburn with those two.
Is it there a way that we can, as a council, strike FR-40 and RR?
Absolutely, yes. So this is a recommendation to you from the commission, you are the authority.
What was their rationale? Can I ask on those two?
I think the A-ten and FR-40 are going to be similar to the small-scale slaughter facility, which they had just approved, and it seems similar in its use type, and that seemed reasonable. The resort recreation was tied to the fact that most resort recreation type facilities, none of which we have in the county, are driven more towards that type of use. It's more of a recreational, interactive, they've got to have 2,000 acres, golf course. We're looking at a whole different scale of operation. And so it seemed appropriate to tie it to that and allow it to occur in that type of zoning. Again, we, that's not been really tested.
But it's not an ag.
Correct.
Well, but so, FR-40 does have ag in it, so...
It does, but I...
I mean, you go up Thirteen Canyon, you've got FR-40, and they're farming it.
That's right.
And you go into...
I would, I would suggest that we, that we scratch the FR-40, and then we can review it, if somebody can come and share with us how it would work.
Is that a motion, Gordy?
The RU-2, the RU-5?
Do you want to make that?
Leave that, no. No, and RU-2, RU-5?
Approved.
I think you just allow the conditionally use to be put in A-ten, and that's it myself, right?
Yeah, I want to read it again.
That's my feelings.
So there's a motion to strike the FR-40s are second?
Second.
Okay. So it moved in second to strike FR-40 on there.
And also the...
I don't want to read the whole long thing.
And also the resort.
And also the resort? Okay.
Now, that doesn't mean that somebody can't come and approach us and share with us how it could work. I mean, it's just saying, I don't quite see how that's going to work, so let's not put it in there, and then at a future date, it can always be changed.
Okay.
So are we almost done? I'm almost ready to say, let's go ahead and do this, and be happy with it.
Let's vote on this part first. All in favor of striking FR-40 and the resort zone? Say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, any abstention? Motion carries unanimously.
I mean, it's getting nine o'clock, and you know, my lights start to go out about nine, and I'm not sure I'll be able to participate very well after.
Do you guys want to vote on this tonight? Paul's ready to make a motion. I'd like to look at it one more week and just go through it again, but, but whatever the council wants to do.
Is there anything other information that we need to have to vote for it? I don't see there's going to be anything else coming, I'm pretty supportive of it.
I am too.
I am too.
I think I am.
Paulie, can make your motion if you want to.
All right. Well, if we do that, I mean, it looks like they've addressed everything that we've talked about.
I think so.
They did a fantastic job.
Horse, till it was dead, buried it, dug it back up, beat it again.
I ran in, I ran into Keith Mickle, believe it or not, at a parts store, and I said, I see you're on the agenda, and he was very supportive of what, you know, the council and the planning and zoning had put together, and so I think, you know, I think it's good. I mean, if that's what we've decided to do, then let's go ahead and do it.
Okay. Well, then I'll make the motion to waive the rules and approve ordinance 2021-21 amendments to Title 17 to allow a winery, and that motion includes the, what we just voted on, to strike FR-40 and resort recreation.
I'll second that.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded to approve with the amendment, ordinance 2021-21 amendments to Title 17 to allow a winery. All in favor?
Aye.
Now, I would like...
Any opposed?
Go ahead.
Any abstention? Motion carries unanimously.
I would like Mr. Mickle to bring us a sample of grape juice that's not alcoholic. I'd like to taste his grapes.
Okay.
I think they're just going to be honorary county council people with as long as they've been here, so...
In the interest of time, let's move quick to Resolution 2021-19, approving an interlocal and intergovernmental housing agreement for housing inmates at the Cache County jail. Is the sheriff still here? I think he left.
His lights went out.
Yeah. He was smart, he left.
I read through that. I mean, it makes sense, it's just a more formality, isn't it?
I think it is. Executive Zook, do you have any input on it? Or Bryce, do you have any input on that? Or Executive Zook? Do you have anything to add on this?
I'm sorry, Jeanine was just adding something.
Yeah. The main thing is this is local and council, is because it's interlocal and intergovernmental, dealing with two different entities. So it really, it's a contract that has been approved, but it needs official...
That's what he's been doing with all the different counties, bringing them in.
I would then waive the rules and make a motion to approve... I, I would then waive the rules and make a motion to approve Resolution 2021-19, Resolution approving the inter-local and intergovernmental housing agreement for housing inmates at the Cache County Jail.
Second.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded to approve Resolution 2021-19, and Carl just described it, so I'm not going to re-say it. Um, is there any further discussion? Carrying on, proceed to vote. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstention? I have staying because I forgot to read it, so I don't want to vote on something I didn't read. Okay, uh, we'll move to item 11C, uh, discussion regarding Agricultural Protection Area Advisory Board. So let me give you a little background on this. We've had a, um, resident who came to her attention that our agricultural advisory board just kind of died, and so we wanted to get the council's feelings on whether or not we should restart this. I had some good conversations with Chris Herrell, and I also asked Casey Snyder if he'd be here, and Casey has been great to sit here for a long time.
How long have you guys?
Um, Casey, do you want to, Casey's got a background, of course, in agriculture and preserving agriculture, and have some words if you want to come up here to add for us?
Yeah, please. I will say, um, the best thing I've seen tonight is that after a riveting discussion about COVID, um, we had an even more riveting discussion about wine, so that's proof that COVID will drive anybody to drinking, so.
Say a little longer, and we'll give you the second version of wine. H-I-A.
There you go. There you go. Talk about the cheese. Yeah, exactly, well, you know, it's never a dull moment here in Cache County, I should come more often, so. Um, well, I, I kind of wanted to maybe tailor my discussions, and Chris and I had this discussion prior. So you've got the, the ag advi, the, the protection side of this and the ag advisory side, and so, um, they're, they're very separate animals, and I know on the agenda item, it's more on the protection side. Um, I'd, if, if the council's okay with that, I'd more like to direct my comments at the advisory board proper, if that's okay. Um, so as you're, I mean, some of you are probably participating, and I know Joe Furman participated in it 10, oh, almost 15 years ago. The, the ag advisory board was kind of put together at that time, because we were losing agriculture, is always seen as the place where we'll put something else, right? It's, something is usually agricultural zone, and we hold that sort of open because maybe one day we'll have a, an industry of some sort there, or a, or a housing development of some type there. It's always, it's, it's not prioritizing it, it's always the space where we'll fit something else. And one of the things that I think that we, that is worthy of discussion, um, is finding ways that you can prioritize the existence of agriculture like you would prioritize the existence of anything else, rather than seeing it only as second fiddle, identifying the prime agricultural lands, and then with whatever means possible to incentivize those industries to stay in business, or to protect those spaces long-term through, through a series of, of, uh, financial incentives. Um, I know when the advisory board met prior, they identified critical areas for agriculture in this valley, and it was, you know, mostly the west side, and, and where there were some prime soils and, and critical irrigation infrastructure. But I think now where we're, we're at this, uh, crossroads where we may not see Cache County as either rural or agricultural in the next 10 to 15 years, we need to start prioritizing it, or those decisions will happen without our input. So, um, if the county is amenable, I would recommend maybe rebooting that in some form or fashion, and, and I'm happy to lend my time and talent, if, if I have either of those, uh, to the, to that effort. So that's sort of the quick and dirty on that front.
Thank you, Casey.
Question, council, we haven't dissolved the, um, ag, ag set aside board, what's the code?
Agricultural Advisory Board, yeah.
We haven't, we've never set it aside, it might not be meeting, and it might need new members.
That's default. I mean, like, yeah, it's not meeting, we don't know who the members are. Chris, do you want to speak to that? He's been working on this.
Joe, are you the only living one left?
Thank you, Casey, by the way.
Joe, are you the only living one left that was on that board?
The one, yeah.
Well, we used to always have one representative from the conservation districts, uh, one from the North Cache, and one from the, from the-
Farm Bureau.
Oxmouth Fork in North Cache.
And then one from the Farm Bureau, I mean, they, they're still in operation, so we- So we've got three standing members, even though they haven't functioned, but when we used to do ag production, now you would just call that board together and do it.
Yeah, I can address some of that. I did a little bit of digging around after talking to, uh, Madam Chair about the Agricultural Protection Area Advisory Board, who primarily is going to look at your ag protection areas. And the last time you had one through a process, it went to the, we sent it to, but it was just checkmarked within a point, who's on the agricultural advisory board. Your code also specifies it has to be from one of those conservation districts, Cache, from their, I forget the title now. Um, so when it, when it's pulled from that, then you can make that assignment, it's a five-member board, and they hear those requests and requirements. A question I've had as I've done this research that's come up is, you've got the Agricultural Protection Area Advisory Board-